Good morning and well, or good evening and welcome to the East Brandywine Township Board of Supervisors regular session for Thursday, February 21st, 2019. Just a reminder, a recording device will be used during this meeting. We're going to open the meeting with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna do the commendations today to, by, from chief to, to Sergeant Glenn Mooney and Officer Tanner Smith.
Good evening, welcome to the Township Board meeting, guys. Welcome to all the guests, family members, and everybody that came in tonight to recognize the officers. We have two commendations tonight, and then we're going to be swearing in two officers to full-time status. So I'm going to start off with commendations. I want to introduce Sergeant Glenn Mooney and Officer Tanner Smith. On Thursday, January 24th, 2019, at approximately 7:02 a.m., East Brandywine Township Police Sergeant Glenn Mooney and Officer Tanner Smith responded to the Snokeo Station for report of an unconscious male sitting in a vehicle. On arrival at the scene, officers found the victim unresponsive with difficulty breathing. Officers suspecting a drug overdose immediately put the victim into a recovery position and administered a dose of Naxalone. When the victim did not respond to the treatment, officers administered a second dose. Medical personnel later arriving on scene took over treatment and removed the victim for transport. Shortly after being put into the ambulance, the victim regained consciousness. The subsequent investigation revealed that the victim had overdosed on heroin while sitting in the parking lot. As a result of the rescue efforts by Sergeant Glenn Mooney and Officer Tanner Smith, the victim was revived and survived the medical emergency. Sergeant Glenn Mooney and Officer Tanner Smith are to be commended for their quick and calm actions while in the performance of duty and for administering first aid which prevented the death of another person. Congratulations on an outstanding job. Your American commendation is issued by the Board of Supervisors this 21st day of February 2019. Thank you.
Great job. Congratulations.
Next, we're going to appoint two of our part-time officers to full-time status. And I'm, we're going to have the oaths issued individually so that the families can have pictures and whatnot. So would I like to bring up Ryan Kansas at ease? Ryan, you want to bring up your mom? I'd like to introduce Judge Vloki.
Ma'am, you want to hold the Bible?
Ryan, Ryan graduated from Guarded Valley High School in 2009. He attended the Delaware County Community College Municipal Police Academy and graduated in December of 2013. He's worked for, as a police officer, in Norwood Borough, Millborn Borough, Darby Township, and most recently Fullcroft Borough Police Department. He was hired by East Brandywine Township as a part-time officer in June of 2018. And so I'm going to let Judge Vloki administer his oath.
Are you going to raise your right hand, place your left hand on the Bible, and repeat after me? "I, Ryan J. Kansas at ease."
"I, Ryan J. Kansas at ease."
Do solemnly swear and affirm-
Do solemnly swear and affirm-
That I will support-
That I will support-
Obey-
Obey-
And defend-
And defend.
The Constitution of the United States of America-
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania-
The Constitution and laws of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The laws and ordinances of the Township of East Brandywine-
The laws and ordinance of the Township of East Brandywine.
And law enforcement code of ethics.
And law enforcement code of ethics.
And that I will faithfully discharge-
And that I will faithfully discharge-
The duties of my office-
The duties of my office.
As police officer-
As police officer.
With fidelity-
With fidelity.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
I will uphold-
I will uphold-
Obey-
Obey.
And enforce-
And enforce.
The law-
The law.
Without consideration-
Without consideration.
To a person's race-
To a person's race.
Color-
Color.
Sex-
Sex.
Religious creed-
Religious creed.
Sexual orientation-
Sexual orientation.
Age-
Age.
National origin-
National origin.
Ancestry-
Ancestry.
Handicap-
Handicap.
Or disability.
Or disability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Next, I would like to introduce Officer Mike Triola. And I believe he's going to have his wife, Ally, come up. Grayson going to be okay? Hold on. Ally, how you doing? Mike graduated from Plumstead Christian High School in 2007. He attended the Montgomery County Municipal Police Academy and graduated in February 2010. Mike has worked as a police officer for West Chester University, West County Township, and East Whiteland Police Departments. Mike was hired by East Brandywine Township as a part-time officer in November 2018. He is married to his wife, Ally, and has a two-year-old son, Grayson.
You're going to hold the Bible. You're going to raise your right hand, you're going to place your left hand on the Bible, and repeat after me. "I, Michael J. Triola, Jr."
"I, Michael J. Triola, Jr."
Do solemnly swear and affirm-
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support-
That I will support.
Obey-
Obey.
And defend-
And defend.
The Constitution of the United States of America-
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania-
The Constitution and laws of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The laws and ordinances of the Township of East Brandywine-
The laws and ordinances of the Township of East Brandywine.
And the law enforcement code of ethics.
And the law enforcement code of ethics.
And that I will faithfully discharge-
And that I will faithfully discharge-
The duties of my office-
The duties of my office.
As police officer-
As police officer.
With fidelity-
With fidelity.
To the best of my ability-
To the best of my ability.
I will uphold, obey, and enforce-
I will uphold, obey, and enforce.
The law-
The law.
Without consideration-
Without consideration.
To a person's race-
To a person's race.
Color-
Color.
Sex-
Sex.
Religious creed-
Religious creed.
Sexual orientation-
Sexual orientation.
Age-
Age.
National origin-
National origin.
Ancestry-
Ancestry.
Handicap-
Handicap.
Or disability.
Or disability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Okay, moving on, we're going to open this conversation up to public comment for non-agenda items. Seeing none, we will move on to the minutes of the previous minute, uh, meetings. Board of Supervisors. And it's all on camera.
I thought you were in place to prevent that.
Uh, that'll be the highlight. The meetings of the Board of Supervisors, February 7th, 2019.
Will they be approved as submitted?
All second, all in favor?
Aye.
Treasurers' report.
Thank you. Bank account balances as of February 21st, 2019 are as follows. General fund checking, $558,936.45. General fund investment, $1,093,138.61. State fund, $143,637.34. Referendum open space, $2,460,676.11. Open space, $793,859.13. And traffic impact, $1,620,468.83. And there are a total of 123 checks in need of approval for the general fund, one for the capital fund, and seven for the state fund. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's take a minute to see if the finances are in order.
Turn that off. No, I didn't turn it off. I thought I did. Whenever you're ready, I am.
Make a motion, and we approve the disbursements as requested?
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Staff reports, Township Manager's report. Scott?
Thank you. The Board of Supervisors at their February 7th public meeting approved the submission of the Stormwater Highway Occupancy Permit application for, or to PennDOT for the stormwater that's associated with the Ballinger Road, Route 322 intersection improvements. I've since spoken to Bob Hermly from Pulte Homes and discussed a timeline for a reasonable start of construction pending PennDOT's approval of that permit. And we expect that Pulte's contractor will begin construction toward the end of April this year. An FCC order that became effective on January 5th of this year limits certain regulations for management of wireless communications equipment, particularly at the local level. We previously updated our wireless communications section or standards in, I believe it was 2013, to, to set standards on locations for poles and antennas in the public right-of-way, typically called, or referred to as small wireless facilities or distributed antenna systems that are called DAS, DAS. FCC order includes maximum timeframes for the approval, which they call shot clocks, and minimum or maximum fees charged by the municipalities for initial applications and recurring fees. Our Solicitor's Office has begun a review of these, our current ordinance language, and we expect to have a draft amendment prepared for discussion at our March 20th task force meeting. And the reason this is important, when we made the changes in 2013, it was to limit the, these communication companies, not just Verizon and those companies, but other companies that all of a sudden appear overnight with 40-to-60-foot poles in people's front yards because they're used, trying to use the public right-of-way. Our spring mile marker will include information on our Act 537 Facilities Plan, Sewage Facilities Plan survey of all property owners with on-lot septic systems. We're trying to highlight the importance of completing and submitting the survey either by return mail or online. This is an important first step in the update of the township's sewage facilities plans. We're asking all respondents to answer each question honestly and completely. Replies to the survey will assist the township in developing the most efficient and economical ways of planning for future sewage needs in the township in compliance with updated DEP regulations. If an insufficient number of surveys are not received, or yes, I should say, if an insufficient number of surveys are received, DEP regulations require that the township undertake door-to-door visits of those property owners who did not respond, which will be very time-consuming and costly. We're, we're hoping that people will understand that this is in their best interest to protect our water supplies. Our annual multi-municipal document shredding and e-waste collection event has been scheduled for Saturday, May 11th, from 9:00 a.m. to noon. The location has changed, however, from the Kmart parking lot in Thorndale to the North Brandywine Middle School, Reeseville Elementary Complex at 200 Reeseville Road. The reason for this was, of course, Kmart closed, and we were unable to secure the use of the now vacant parking lot. Since the closure of the store in December of 2018, we've secured an additional shredding vehicle from Wigan Shredding for our event, which we hope will reduce the wait time. The event starts at 9:00 a.m. We have people lining up anywhere from 7:30 to 8:00, even though the event starts at 9:00. And we'll close promptly at noon because we'll have people that will come after the event, hoping that they can get rid of their valuable documents by shredding, or their televisions and computer equipment and other things that have plugs. Once again, scouts from Hopewell Troop 8 will be available to assist with vehicle unloading. We're also looking for other members of our community to help with the event because we can always use more help. Each year, the, this program gets bigger and bigger. So I think that the, as long as the school, Coastal School District approves it, I think we'll be able to better coordinate the, the two collection events. In November 2018, the Chester County Commissioners adopted Landscapes 3, which is their updated comprehensive plan for the county and the municipalities in the county. The Planning Commission has asked each municipality to endorse Landscapes 3, to encourage a consistent approach to addressing growth, which we all see, and, and land preservation by enacting a resolution, which I didn't get to earlier this week. So I'm asking that the Board consider this resolution at our March 6th public meeting. Later in 2019, the County Planning Commission will be contacting each municipality to discuss updating regulations such as multimodal transportation, natural resource protection regulations, most of which the Board adopted as part of our Vision Partnership Program grant in November of 2019. But I suspect that there'll be some other items that they'll want us to take a look at. And the last thing I have for this evening, we received a complete proposal from the Cohen Law Group to negotiate a Verizon cable franchise renewal. This is for several municipalities, not just East Brandywine Township. The Cohen Group has represented local governments for over 21 years and are acknowledged by, by most as an expert in cable franchise and wireless matters, which makes them uniquely qualified to represent this group. At last count, there were 18 municipalities in Chester County that were willing to participate in this. Whether that's the final number, I'm not sure, but in your packets, I have provided information on the proposal. If the number is between 15 and 18 participating municipalities, our cost, our total cost for this would be $4,875. It's basically a sliding flat fee based on the population of the municipality, whether they're above or below 10,000, and also the number of participating municipalities. We've used the Cohen Group before for a franchise, Verizon franchise audit, which is still going on after 18 months. And one thing that Carrie Vargo from West Brat, or I'm sorry, West Goshen Township, thank you, has negotiated with Dan Cohen is that payments would be in three equal installments. One with the engagement letter, one with when they're halfway through the project, and one when the project's complete. So I'd respectfully request the Board authorize me to execute this agreement to participate in this joint franchise renewal negotiation with the Cohen Law Group of Pittsburgh. And I did talk to Solicitor Camp this afternoon, and she said that this, they're the best in the area and recommended that we engage them.
They're Pittsburgh-based. But yeah, most of the municipal clients that I work with use the Cohen Law Group. That's the only kind of law that this gentleman practices, and he has a very good relationship with all the cable companies and the DAS providers, and he's definitely worth, worth the price that he's providing.
I'll make a motion, we approve the contract with the Cohen Group in the amount of $4,875.
All second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Okay, Luke, the Assistant Township Manager's report.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. As you can tell, staff have a lot of irons in the fire. I'm going to try to work my way down through some of the projects we're working on with some brief summaries of where we're at. I'm going to start with the Toder purchase. Township staff took delivery of 764-gallon recycle carts early Wednesday morning. Delivery of the carts to the homes of our newest residents that was delayed by our low inventory will resume on Thursday, February 28th. I will be presenting a grant application for the DEP Act 101, Section 209 program grant to be applied to the costs of this purchase retroactively at one of your two meetings in March. If we are awarded this funding, the state will pay up to 90% of the costs. My thanks to all the residents, especially the ones who just bought brand-new houses who have not yet gotten their recycle carts for their patience, this 30 days while we were waiting for the arrival of these carts. Speaking of new residents, Republic Services, our current contract with Republic Services, which is effective January 1, 2015, through December 31st of 2019, contained a provision that outlined an escalator for the growth in the number of housing units in our township. The provision required a total stop growth to exceed by 10% the number of stops before any adjustment was made. Remarkably, the growth of our community in just the first four years of this contract has surpassed, surpassed this threshold. Therefore, Republic Services has notified us that they will be billing for $29,403 per month instead of the contract rate of $26,435 per month based on the number of new housing units they have to service. An update on the Applecross HOA and the associated ScanTech contract approved by the Board of Supervisors. ScanTech has completed the digitization of the Applecross land development records. Staff has been using the processing power of multiple workstations. Any computer that's not logged in, I've hijacked and made to run processing in the background, using these workstations to import and run optical character recognition on this material. At this time, the digital archive consists of 36,000 pages, of which 487 were responsive to the right-to-know request. The request was satisfied on February 12th. My thanks to the Board for your support of additional resources for staff to satisfy this request, and my thanks to the requester for granting multiple extensions while staff reviewed the material. Final billing, which was based on the number of, of pages scanned, has not yet been received. An update on the bathroom for Phase 1 of the community park and the associated community park grant. Township staff and consultants met with the Department of Conservation and Natural Resources Representative, Sherri Matter, Drew Gilcrest, and Mark Hansford on, on January 31st to kick off the project. In November, the township received matching grant funds in the amount of $165,000 from the Community Conservation Programs, Partnerships Program, or C2P2 grant. As of February 13th, the township has fully executed contracts in hand. An update on the Tracer GIS and workflow management software update. Township staff met with Representatives of Man Associates to kick off the implementation of this new cloud-based GIS and permits tracking system on Tuesday, February 19th. This process is expected to take about four months, and our top priority is streamlining our building permit tracking processes. A note about the Historical Commission, they are pleased to announce their lineup for the 2019 Spring Speaker Series. Additional materials will be available in the next mile marker. On March 17th, the, the subject will be the arrival of the Mormons and how it impacted East Brandywine and Wallace Townships. Our presenter will be John Miller, a retired Downingtown schoolteacher and Gettysburg National Park Guide. On April 28th, the subject will be Follow the Brandywine for Geology, Ecology, and Architectural Features on the border of East Brandywine Township. Our, our speaker will be Christine Kokaza, a science teacher. On May 19th, the subject will be the Special Barns of Chester County, and our speaker will be Greg Huber, who specializes in pre-Civil War era house and barn architecture of Holland, Dutch, and Swiss-German areas. Greg is an independent scholar and consultant and the principal owners of Past Perspectives and Eastern Barn Consultants. Respectfully submitted, Luke Revan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Building Inspector's report.
For the month of January 2019, there were a total of 24 building permits issued. Use and occupancy permits issued were 24. 182 inspections completed. Total fees collected for the month of January, $28,354, respectfully submitted in the writing king.
Thank you. Matt for the Roadmasters' report.
Thank you. We have completed and sent forms required by DEP for the Growing Greener Grant. These forms were completed with the technical assistance of Cedarville. This grant is for $246,021, $21,000. The work plan is within the Culbertson Run Development, which includes tree removal, re-establishment of roadside swales, underground basins located within Hawthorne Drive and repaving the road. We expect the construction to start late spring. And today, we received delivery of two new Hustler zero-turn mowers. The machines are Hustler Super Z Hyperdrive 36 horsepower Vanguard engines, one with a 60-inch and one with a 72-inch depth. And my last section, I think it's covered in New Business.
Okay. I just have one question. Matt, are we staying in communication with the Culbertson Run HOA on the progress of that plan?
Yes, we've been through, through email conversation with the President-
Mike Myers.
Yeah, Mike Myers of the HOA.
All right, thank you. Chief, for the police report.
Good evening. The monthly report for January 2019, the police department handled 2,712 incidents. We had completed 206 investigations. There were seven arrests, zero summary arrests. We had three warrant arrests. There was one juvenile petition. 16 accidents were investigated. 191 traffic citations were issued.
I'm not sure, but in your packets I have provided information. On the proposal, if the number is between fifteen and eighteen participating municipalities, our cost, our total cost for this would be $4,875. It's basically a sliding flat fee based on the population of municipality, whether they're above or below 10,000, and also the number of participating municipalities. We've used the Cohen Group before for a franchise, Verizon franchise audit, which is still going on after eighteen months. And one thing that Kerry Vargo from West Brat, or I'm sorry, West Goshen Township, thank you, has negotiated with Dan Cohen is that payments would be in three equal installments. One with the engagement letter, one with when they're halfway through the project, and one when the project's complete. So I'd respectfully request the board authorize me to execute this agreement to participate in this joint franchise renewal negotiation with the Cohen Law Group of Pittsburgh. And I did talk to Solicitor Camp this afternoon, and she said that this, they're the best in the area and recommended that we engage.
They're Pittsburgh-based, but yeah, most of the municipal clients that I work with use the Cohen Law Group. That's the only kind of law that this gentleman practices, and he has a very good relationship with all the cable companies and the DAS providers, and he's definitely worth, worth the price that he's providing.
I'll make a motion, we approve the contract with the Cohen Group in the amount of $4,875.
All second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Okay, Luke, the Assistant Township Manager's report.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As you can tell, staff have a lot of irons in the fire. I'm gonna try to work my way down through some of the projects we're working on with some brief summaries of where we're at. I'm gonna start with the Toder purchase. Township staff took delivery of 764-gallon recycle carts early Wednesday morning. Delivery of the carts to the homes of our newest residents that was delayed by our low inventory will resume on Thursday, February 28th. I will be presenting a grant application for the DEP Act 101, Section 209 program grant to be applied to the costs of this purchase retroactively at one of your two meetings in March. If we are awarded this funding, the state will pay up to ninety percent of the costs. My thanks to all the residents, especially the ones who just bought brand-new houses who have not yet gotten their recycle carts for their patience, this thirty days while we were waiting for the arrival of these carts. Speaking of new residents, Republic Services, our current contract with Republic Services, which is effective January 1, 2015, through December 31 of 2019, contained a provision that outlined an escalator for the growth in the number of housing units in our township. The provision required a total stop growth to exceed by ten percent the number of stops before any adjustment was made. Remarkably, the growth of our community in just the first four years of this contract has surpassed this threshold. Therefore, Republic Services has notified us that they will be billing for $29,403 per month instead of the contract rate of $26,435 per month, based on the number of new housing units they have to service. An update on the Applecross HOA and the associated ScanTech contract approved by the Board of Supervisors. ScanTech has completed the digitization of the Applecross land development records. Staff has been using the processing power of multiple workstations. Any computer that's not logged in, I've hijacked and made to run processing in the background, using these workstations to import and run optical character recognition on this material. At this time, the digital archive consists of 36,000 pages, of which 487 were responsive to the right-to-know request. The request was satisfied on February 12th. My thanks to the board for your support of additional resources for staff to satisfy this request, and my thanks to the requester for granting multiple extensions while staff reviewed the material. Final billing, which was based on the number of pages scanned, has not yet been received. An update on the bathroom for Phase 1 of the community park and the associated community park grant. Township staff and consultants met with the Department of Conservation and Natural Resources Representative Sherry Matter, Drew Gilcrest, and Mark Hansford on January 31st to kick off the project. In November, the township received matching grant funds in the amount of $165,000 from the Community Conservation Programs, Partnerships Program, or C2P2 grant. As of February 13th, the township has fully executed contracts in hand. An update on the Tracer GIS and workflow management software update. Township staff met with Representatives of Man Associates to kick off the implementation of this new cloud-based GIS and permits tracking system on Tuesday, February 19th. This process is expected to take about four months, and our top priority is streamlining our building permit tracking processes. A note about the Historical Commission, they are pleased to announce their lineup for the 2019 Spring Speaker Series. Additional materials will be available in the next mile marker. On March 17th, the subject will be the arrival of the Mormons and how it impacted East Brandywine and Wallace Townships. Our presenter will be John Miller, a retired Downingtown schoolteacher and Gettysburg National Park guide. On April 28th, the subject will be Follow the Brandywine for Geology, Ecology, and Architectural Features on the border of East Brandywine Township. Our speaker will be Christine Kokaza, a science teacher. On May 19th, the subject will be the Special Barns of Chester County, and our speaker will be Greg Huber, who specializes in pre-Civil War-era house and barn architecture of Holland, Dutch, and Swiss-German areas. Greg is an independent scholar and consultant, and the principal owners of Past Perspectives and Eastern Barn Consultants. Respectfully submitted, Luke Revan.
Thank you. Building Inspector's report.
For the month of January 2019, there were a total of 24 building permits issued. Use and occupancy permits issued were 24, 182 inspections completed. Total fees collected for the month of January, $28,354, respectfully submitted in Iran King.
Thank you. Matt, for the Roadmaster's report.
Thank you. We have completed and sent forms required by DEP for the Growing Greener Grant. These forms were completed with the technical assistance of Cedarville. This grant is for $246,021, and the work plan is within the Culbertson Run Development, which includes tree removal, re-establishment of roadside swales, underground basins located within Hawthorne Drive and repaving the road. We expect the construction to start late spring. And today, we received delivery of two new Hustler zero-turn mowers. The machines are Hustler Super Z Hyperdrive 36 horsepower Vanguard engines, one with a 60-inch and one with a 72-inch deck. And my last section, I think it's covered in New Business.
Okay. I just have one question. Matt, are we staying in communication with the Culbertson Run HOA on the progress of that plan?
Yes, we've been through, through email conversation with the President.
Mike Myers.
Yeah, Mike Myers of the HOA.
All right, thank you. Chief, for the police report.
Good evening. The monthly report for January 2019, the police department handled 2,712 incidents. We had completed 206 investigations. There were seven arrests, zero summary arrests. We had three warrant arrests. There was one juvenile petition. Sixteen accidents were investigated, 191 traffic citations were issued, 54 warnings were issued, and officers logged 8,611 miles of patrol. In addition to the swearing-in of the two new full-time officers this evening, the police department wants to welcome our newest part-time officer, Danny Miller. Danny is an EMT for Good Fellowship Ambulance, Minkwes Fire Company, and Skipback Ambulance. He is also a part-time police officer with Roersford Borough Police Department. Danny was sworn in by District Judge Veloki on February 5th, and he is presently assigned to the department's field training program. This past month, we posted information on our Facebook page regarding driveway paving scams that we are investigating. This past week, we caught up to one of those paving crews, and as a result of the excellent investigative work by the police officers that were involved, we were able to get positive IDs on three of the suspects. Those criminal charges have been filed, and those warrants have been issued. Our next show with Five O is going to be on Wednesday, March 6th, and will feature State Representative Danielle Freo Otten as our guest. We will be having that event at Crops Market beginning at 8:00 a.m., so invite everybody to come out, if you haven't met the new state rep. She's very nice, actually. Training completed for the month. Property and evidence custodian training was done by Corporal Steve Tyree, and the entire police department has begun our recertification in first aid CPR and AED. We have one correspondence that came in from Kevin Schneider for Officer Ray, thanking her for her assistance in an accident, and you have copies of the monthly investigations that were completed and officer activity reports.
Fire Company.
Good evening. Monthly report for the East Brandywine Fire Company. We had 68 total incidents of the month, 27 fire incidents, 41 medical incidents. We had 10 fire calls in East Brandywine Township, 16 medical calls in East Brandywine Township. We utilized 251 gallons of East Brandywine fuel. We had three training sessions with an average of 22 people in attendance. Average personnel responding to fire calls were 10 per call. A couple things of note that we want to make you aware of is the ladder truck is returned, completely in service now, serving the community. We wanted to extend the invitation to all three of the supervisors and staff to come down to the station, see both new pieces of apparatus. We'll try and coordinate that so you can all come together. The new gear room that we've been working on is nearing completion, and that was necessitated by the room that we did not have when the new pieces of apparatus came in. We have four members currently in EMT class. The radio tower that I mentioned to you folks last month that was getting ready to fall over has been successfully removed. Our current boiler situation is still in state of patchwork repair, and we're acquiring bids to put a new boiler in. And just as we think we have everything under control, the roof in the banquet hall is significantly leaking, and we have folks taking looks at that with cost of repair being pretty high. So just an update as to what we're going on with the building challenges down there.
Thank you, sorry to hear that. Obviously, you know my phone number. We're gonna go on to new business now, oh, I'm sorry, old business. I don't believe we have any old business, so we're gonna go into new business, and we're gonna go back to Luke for the Wissahickin bottling plant.
Actually, Matt and I are gonna handle this one as a team on this. Let me, got a bunch of buttons to push here, let me load up a picture. As you may recall, as part of the settlement agreement with the land development, formerly known as Hillendale and currently known as the Estates at Down and Forge, the township took possession of a parcel for open space purposes, and that parcel contained the ruins of a bottling plant, commonly called the Wissahickin bottling plant. Matt and myself and our risk management professional went out and visited the site to talk about ways to secure the property and make it safe. And we have a proposal this evening, and that involves taking down the building using in-house staff. So in front of you is an aerial photo. I would like to show you some other conditioned photos. Just to give you an idea of the property, it's a cinder block structure. It'd be very difficult to secure with plywood or by other means. I've got one other photo. The red line shown is what staff is proposing to demolish the structure down to. Again, we're talking about equipment already in the possession of the township and labor resources as available to do so. Matt, did you have anything you wanted to add to this proposal?
The, well, like Luke said, the structures, block structures, so most of the block can be recycled, and then the roofing material and some other material would be placed in the dumpsters and removed. There's, what, three fiberglass tanks, which we believe held the water. They may be a little bit difficult to figure out how to dismantle them, but other than that, it's mainly just a shell, block shell.
I guess I should mention this is an action item. We're asking board's permission to proceed with pulling necessary permits from our own team to demolish the building, and this is obviously not going to be as high a priority as snow events is when they happen, but I understand labor resources are a little more available in the spring period, and so we would do this as it was available. I can't give you an exact timeline.
I'm assuming, Matt, you wouldn't propose this if you didn't feel comfortable that your guys could take care of it?
Right.
Do you have an idea what we're talking about in total man-hours, so we have an idea of what the actual cost is?
I would imagine probably two weeks. We'd have to start with cleanup around the outside of the building, tree removal. Surprisingly, there's not a whole lot of materials that have been dumped in that area. There's a tree that fell across the driveway, and I think that helps stop some of the illegal dumping down in there.
Just a thought, are we, I'm assuming you were thinking about bringing a backhoe down there?
Yes.
And then my next question is, are we renting any equipment for any other projects upcoming? I knew you had the project on Zen Road, but is there anything else that you're gonna have rental equipment, albeit the stormwater management, anything?
As far as rental equipment?
Yep.
I don't believe we're, we plan on.
I'm just thinking it'd be better to use a rental piece of equipment that we're gonna have anyway, rather than beating up on our brand-new backhoe, that's all.
That's a good consideration.
I mean, the liability's on them, not on us, for the damage weight, you know what I mean?
Right.
But you said two weeks, so that's two weeks, I'm assuming eighty hours, and how many people?
Be four guys. Plus the cost of the materials, you know, disposal of the block, and then also the building materials.
Are there wells on that property?
There, there are, I am not sure.
The wells are across the street, they're on the other side of Creek Road, the west side of Creek Road.
Have they been decommissioned at the time that the township acquired it?
I thought they had been, but I don't remember specifically. We had, I had a discussion, I think it was with Matt and Luke, when they were either on, going down there to take a look at this or afterwards, because I recall seeing stainless steel, I'll call it a wellhead, on the other side of the road, but they didn't see anything like that. So I don't know if all that's been removed and the well was filled, or what.
Can't open that. For the record, we don't own the other side of 282. That would be, that is future HOA property, open space of development.
But I think it's a question to ask, just so we have something on record showing. I would assume a commercial well like that, if it gets decommissioned, they have to file something with DEP, and there's some process that they have to go through, so even though it's not on our property, we want to know that it's taken care of. But I know Matt and Luke did say that it doesn't appear like there's any piping or anything from the wells to this facility that's around, so they must have scrapped, pulled all that stuff and scrapped it. Yeah, as I said, that's my only concern, is beating up on a brand-new backhoe, knocking a building down, and I'm questioning if it doesn't make sense to run a backhoe for two days to do the initial knockdown and then use ours just to do the cleanup. I mean, you guys might see it otherwise, but that's just my.
Is there like a reason that this is proposed? Is it just something on the list, or is it?
Attractive nuisance.
Right. Well, I can tell you what got this on my agenda was concerns about the physical condition of the site. We don't want to be in the business of owning an attractive nuisance, and so that's why when we made the site visit, we brought along our insurance agent to get an idea of the best way to secure the property. There are new signs on the property and markings to indicate that, in, that it's not open to the public, it's not a park. The particular suggestion that it be demolished down to the foundation is in lieu of securing it through some other means, and securing it would, based on its condition, be difficult and costly. Moreover, would require frequent inspection to make sure that it had not been broken into. So, you know, we've run this by the Historical Commission as well, it's not listed as a historic resource. You just feel that the best way to make the site safe is to knock it down.
Is that in the floodplain?
It is a very wet site. I could tell you that just based on our trip out there. It may well be. We did not check for that.
Is there any way we can just knock down the middle part and keep the exterior walls and haul our mulch chippings down there on the pad?
The pad is elevated, so it was designed for like a tractor trailer to back up to it, so it's, access to it really isn't very easy. You can't drive up onto it without building a, some type of ramp or to get access to it.
And I think the proposal, just so it's clear, is
Knocking the walls.
To knock the walls down to that pad, so the pad would remain. If there was some use that could be made of the pad in the future, it would be there.
Right.
All right, I have no problem with you guys taking that project on if you feel like you're capable of doing it. Jason?
I mean, if they have the time, if that's one of the things on their to-do list, it's fine, by me.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, Matt, back to you again for the maintenance garage RFP.
We've prepared an RFP for engineering and design for new maintenance garage located near the fuel pumps. We are planning for a five-bay garage in addition to the salt shed. The copy enclosed with this report is slightly revised from the one sent earlier through email to the board, respectfully requesting approval from the board to forward the RFP to designated engineering firms for design prices. And I think, were you gonna bring the, there's a site plan which shows the.
Yeah, it's kind of interesting, these two agenda items are both Luke and Matt, but they're Luke lead on one, Matt in support, and the other one is Matt lead and Luke in support. I have an illustration of, I can't combine it twice.
Well, three times.
I gotta look at the one that doesn't have a delay.
Here.
There it is.
So this is the actual original site plan for the construction of our municipal facilities we're at right now, and so we've envisioned since the beginning of this construction that we would need additional garage bays, and also from a budget perspective, we've been squirreling away money into the capital reserve for a number of years to, for this project. So it has been budgeted in, I believe, the last three or four annual budgets. So I suppose the ask is to advertise the RFP?
It would not be advertised, it would be sent to engineering firms for RFP. Advertisement would not be required.
Yeah, with professional services, you don't need to advertise it.
I have no questions. I'll make a motion, we authorize the distribution of the RFP for the Public Works Garage and Salt Shed Design Engineering and Bid specifications.
I don't really personally think that we need that right now. I think that seems awfully high budget, and I'd asked Matt what would happen to our Public Works Department if it was not approved, and I never received a response. Is that gonna affect you guys?
This budget, just so it's clear, the budget number is not for, I don't believe it's for the Design Engineering and Bid Specs, that's a budget for the project.
Complete project, yes.
So we're not committing to a specific number for the project, but you can't get specific bids so you know what it's gonna cost until you go through this part of the process, design it and create a plan, and then bid specs, and then advertise it for bidding. So I think that addresses part of what you said. The other part is whether we need it or not, that's a whole separate issue.
I mean, it's always nice to have garage space, but I just don't think the size of our township warrants, you know, 12 bays and two salt sheds, yet. That's my opinion.
Well, currently, we have a lot of equipment sitting outside. We've got equipment that's sitting in the back parking lot right now. We've rented one storage container, which is full of recycled containers, and we have a second storage container coming to locate the rest of the recycled containers in them. And we're, we are growing. We've got the Hideaway Development, which came on, we took a portion of that this year. We're doing the maintenance in there. We will have the rest of the Hideaway Development, I would imagine, by the end of the year, which will require for snow removal, another large truck, and another employee, which we would need to house. Also, the police have requested to use one bay for their equipment and park their van in there, and then also have an area in the back for their equipment. They cannot store their equipment within their garage because it's used as a holding area for prisoners when they're taking them out of vehicles, so they cannot have equipment within their garage.
Well, I think that the dump truck in the parking lot, no offense to the Boy Scouts, but we could probably park that dump truck where their bus is, but.
The dump truck that's out back? That's going to go for sale on municipal.
Matt, what?
That's the one we replaced.
What equipment do we have outside right now that, what, just, you don't have to be exact, but ballpark, what, what type of equipment are we storing outside right now?
We currently have our emergency management trailer, our trailer that we use for millers. That's, that's the, the big two items.
And the trash cans, the toters.
Yeah, the recycling.
Right. So, yeah, speaking with my solid waste hat on, it's the Jeep I use for delivery of that, and then the, the existing recycle toters. I'd also mention that the board has at various points considered purchasing recycle, or trash carts to go with the recycle carts. And if we made a purchase of those, we would also have a, a, an inventory of trash carts that would need to go somewhere. And then, Chief, do you want to speak to, to, to your fleet needs for the garage?
Yeah, Matt already mentioned it. You know, one of the concerns we've had in the past is the van. The van that we have is a mobile crime scene unit. It sits outside all the time. Now, it's been sitting out there for quite a few years, don't get me wrong, but, you know, during discussions with Matt, we, we did speak to him about having some space in his new garage to get that under protective cover. I'd also like to get the speed trailer in there. I mean, as, as a township grows, we're already discussing possibly a second speed trailer, because we do get a lot of demands for that. And we are, this year, taking one of the unmarked cars and moving that to the mobile fleet. So, part of our accreditation doesn't allow us to keep vehicles parked inside the garage. So what we've been doing right now is we use the garage as a temporary holding area, and then, you know, once we're done processing, we move it out to our evidence pen. Again, it's, you know, it's something we can work around. But I do also think, based on, you know, where our growth is going, if, and I wasn't aware of all the other totes and everything else, I mean, it's, I don't, you're going to have to come up with some kind of plan for that, whether it's more
I don't have a problem for putting equipment, trucks and police vehicles in a garage. I do have a problem putting trailers and toters in a garage and spending $400,000 for that. So, I'm kind of of the mindset of maybe doing a three-bay garage and doing a two-bay enclosed, or I'm sorry, just a roof structure for the trash cans and the trailers, because the trash cans and the trailers don't concern me as much being in the elements. They'll have roof protection, just not side protection, as the equipment. I mean, that's just my, my thought, but...
We should ask the company who sold us the totes if we could just keep them, their inventory until we need them, as we need them. But there's nothing wrong with having money sitting in capital reserves. It doesn't have to always be spent right away.
Well, it doesn't sound like we have an agreement right this second, Matt. I guess my question is, again, I'll state it, you know, the feasibility of having half and half, half open, half with, with a roof structure, no walls, and the other half with closed bays. I understand we're growing. We do have, if I'm reading this correctly, seven bays right now, and I'm embarrassed to say I've never been in your garage, but is that what you have right now, seven bays?
Six bays.
Six bays, and the salt shed.
Right.
And it would be, the future bay would be about the same size as the current?
No, it's smaller.
The future, you mean salt, salt shed?
I'm reading
This is, it says seven bays, but it wasn't billed as seven.
I was just reading finished floor fifty-four.
That's elevation.
All right. So, again, that's my concern, you know, but it doesn't sound like we have a hundred percent agreement right this second anyway, so I think let's table this and get a little bit more input in it, and I don't think it's fair to waste everybody's time tonight trying to figure this out.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, so we're going to move on to the subdivision and zoning application for the Faisal subdivision, 434, 436, Timber Pass. And I don't know who's handling this one, Scott or Luke?
The applicant.
I'm Lisa DeAndre from Medveck'ski Associates, the engineer on the project. We were in front of you in December for an amendment to the PRD to allow the... Do we have a, a plan of, of this?
Hold on.
All right, give it a shot.
Okay. We're here for subdivision approval for the subdivision of the tract that contains the barn into two detached lots. We have a letter from the county, we have a letter from the township engineer, and we have a recommendation from the planning commission. With the recommendation from the planning commission, there was a stipulation that we talk to the zoning officer about the, whether the building is up to code and whether it falls under the current or existing building code. He looked at the building with the client, Jim Faisal's here, and what he could see, he didn't see any violations. Obviously, you know, walls are up, ceilings are up. He couldn't do a complete investigation. But one thing that became clear is that the code that he would rely on would have been the 1980 Boca Code for this building. Now, the use of the building will not change. Since 1985, it has been occupied by two distinct residential units side by side. There's no construction proposed, and we believe we met that test as suggested by the planning commission.
All right. So, I'm, I'm reading, so we're, we're talking about his report, did, the report was today?
Uh, yes.
That's right here.
Yes, it was.
Okay. So, so are, are you asking, tell me what you're asking.
They're asking for the board to grant preliminary final subdivision approval to allow the barn, which is currently now one structure with two, it was, it was originally approved to have four dwelling units. It is currently, it was only built to have two dwelling units, but it's on one lot. So here's a picture of the aerial. They basically want to put a subdivision line down the center where the party wall is.
Right. I remember all, yep, and I, I guess my question is...
The planning commission recommended that the board grant the subdivision plan approval with the condition that the building code official go out and inspect to make sure that whatever the building code would require for the separation wall meets the code.
Yep.
But I guess my point is, is it was built the way it's being used, so it obviously, to get the use and occupancy certificate, met the code at the time it was built. So nothing's really changing, in my opinion. So I, I'm not sure why
Well
Yeah.
So, so the only thing that I would say is, there's a, there's a notation in here, let's see, you would need to open the walls and ceilings and confirm that the demising wall runs up to the roof. Now, I can't
I don't know if you need to do that, though, because as I said, when it was built, it wouldn't have got the use and occupancy to be built and used the way it's being used now unless it met the code at the time.
Right.
So I think it's fine.
I mean, I don't, I don't think it's that, I mean, you're cutting a piece of drywall and putting your hand in to see if, to see if you have a, a concrete wall. I'm assuming that's, that's what the, the Boca Code was back then?
Yeah, I don't know.
So I, I mean, at the very least, I think that's, that's minimal, is not very invasive.
Speak up here.
Absolutely.
If you go down in the basement, you can see the cement wall. The only place where it's got drywall is up in the bedrooms. So, you can actually stand and shine a flashlight up through the gap, and you can see the cement, cinder block wall going up, at least as far as your vision will let you do it. Frank went upstairs into the bedrooms this afternoon and was pounding on the walls. He said you could feel the ferring strips on the cement. So he seemed satisfied with it. His concern at the time, when I was talking with him, is because we couldn't get to see the top of the chimney up there, whether it had one vent for the chimney, or two, or whatever. And I went home and, we had re-roofed last summer, and while I had the roofers up there, they took a picture of the top chimney for me, because frankly, I had never been up there. So you can see that there is two vents for the fireplace on either side, and also two vents for the two furnaces.
Right.
Which, you know, if it was coming up through a wall that they were sharing, you wouldn't need all four of those. So, I mean, the general feeling was, that was the concern, that whether the firewall inside was broken by chimneys, and since you see that, you can see it's pretty much a solid firewall way up. So...
So, hold on a second, because if, if the chimneys were broken up, then there would be a, and again
No, they're not a common chimney. They did, but the fireplaces on either side don't come together as a common chimney. There's four separate ones going up, one for each fireplace and one, one for each furnace.
Well, if you're not, and you're still not satisfied, you could grant the subdivision plan approval, subject to the condition of the planning commission.
Yeah, yeah. No, my only, like I said, that's my biggest concern, would be the, the firewall between the units. And I, and I'm not saying, I'm not saying you have to take sledgehammers to the wall, but an invasive test with a drill bit would be able to tell you if there's a concrete wall through there. And I wouldn't be okay if, if it was even one of the, one of the inspectors to at least confirm that there is a concrete wall.
I mean, like, what, like a six-inch nail or something, tap through the drywall to the cement?
As long as somebody can confirm that there's, there's a concrete divider between the units, God forbid somebody moves in and finds out a fire breaks out and
I mean, when we built it, you know, your guys, Bud Thomas was the inspector, he saw the building, you know, at the time. You can see down in the basement where the original beams of the barn were cut in order to fit the wall, so, you know, I don't know, I don't know what other, you know, other, I just got done getting the unit painted, frankly, so I really don't want to rip a big wall, hole in the wall.
Yeah. I mean, again, I'm, I'm one of three. That, that would be my biggest concern, is a fire between the units and
Yeah.
and we, we, you know, assumed that there was a firewall up there. I, I agree with you. If you look up at the chimney, you can see, if you look from the basement, you can see, that's my biggest concern. And, and trust me, right now, two layers of five-inch drywall is fire code between units, which is scary.
Well, this is cinder block, so.
Yeah.
I think Kristin indicated that it could be approved, subject to
Yep.
that confirmation. So I'd make a motion, we approve the preliminary dash or slash final subdivision plan with the condition that it be demonstrated that the firewall extends all the way up through the unit.
Yep, and I'm absolutely fine with that.
So just, just to be clear then, if I get like Frank to go out and we go up to the second floor in the bedroom, and would that be enough, or do you need it every six feet, or, I mean?
If it's on the second floor, it certainly has to be supported, and I was going to offer to contact Bud Thomas and see what he remembers from, do you know about when it was built, Jim?
Yeah.
Eighty-six, I think it's
Eighty-four.
About eighty-three, eighty-five, somewhere in that region.
All right. I'll, I'll call Bud tomorrow and see what he remembers. Have you the need to have Frank go out and do anything?
I don't mind the idea of putting a nail hole in, but we literally just got the rooms painted about three months ago.
I don't think it should have to be anything more, like
Yeah.
I could, I could stop by tomorrow, real quick. We don't have a hearing, so, if you want, if you're going to be home, I'll stop by real quick and just check everything for you.
But there, the one side's empty, the one side's got tenant, so, you know, it's empty side of whenever.
Just if you just leave yourself a number, I'll call you in a moment.
Okay.
Somebody second the motion.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Okay. The MVR Weaver Tract Conditional Use Hearing Extension.
Right. So, I have been in communication with the applicant's counsel, Lindsay Dunn, and they are asking for additional time to work through some of the comments in Nate Klein's letter, as well as Andy Heinreich's letter. So we had originally slated next Tuesday for the conditional use hearing, and now they're asking that we continue that. I had circulated a proposed date that was based on the availability of Ms. Dunn and her clients, and we had suggested Monday, March 25th. I know Jay and Kyle both said they were okay. Jason, you think you're okay? Okay. So, if we could just have the board approve that the conditional use hearing will actually be on Monday, March 25th, rather than next Tuesday.
So moved.
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And based on that, they also, they were required to grant the extension for the period of time to hold the hearing, and then that it also necessitated them to grant further extension for you to review land development plans. The second extension there for April 30th, that most likely will have to be further extended, just because once we have the conditional use hearing, you probably won't be in a position to issue a decision on that till your April meetings, and then they'll have to go back, obviously, to the planning commission. But that's, that's typically how it's done. They, they sort of do it incrementally, so I have no problem with the letter extending it to April 30th. So that's really just accepting that extension.
Do we need a motion to accept it?
That's been your practice of how you've been doing it.
I'll make a motion, we accept the extension of time for the, for the plan approval to April 30th, 2019.
All in favor?
Aye.